Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, July ninth, two thousand twenty-four. We'll call it meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor and council, I have two additions for you to consider. One is the, we have an appointment request to the planning commission. You can add that if you're interested in adding that, be ten point one. And then ten point two, we have a temporary liquor license request that asks you to consider adding both those to the agenda tonight.
Motion approved with additions?
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Dave, to approve the council agenda with the additions. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries implications from the Hutchinson Eagle Free Church. Good evening.
Gracious God, thank you for today. Thank you for the leaders that you've put in place here. Thank you for this city and the state that it's in and the nation that we're in, Lord, and the freedom that you've given us. I pray that you would be with our council as they consider these things and be with our community. We pray for your peace and your provision. We pray for your unity this year, Lord, as we continue through summer. And we thank you for the way you've been providing for us. One last thing, Lord, I just want to pray for those who are in need down in Texas and, and the people who have been affected by floods here in Minnesota. We just ask that you would protect those people and bring your presence to them as well. Thank you for the opportunity we have to worship you and to pray to you as we ask for your help in all these things. In Jesus' name, amen.
Next is Pledge of Allegiance.
Pass the flags in the right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anyone have anything tonight? All right, we do have a resolution underneath there. Resolution number one, five, seven, four, nine. Resolution accepting five thousand dollar donation from the Hudson Valley Lodge, one oh nine, for the Oddfellow Park, or equipment, Oddfellow Park Equipment.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Dave, to approve that donation. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comment, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. All righty, we do have approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. The strategic planning session of June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve those minutes. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat, to approve those minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the McLeod County Agricultural Association, August fifteenth through the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, for the McLeod County Fair. B is approval of issuing tattoo license to Jennifer Christensen of Something to Crawl About Health, located at one forty Main Street North. C is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, five, zero. Resolution appointing election judges for the primary election. D is claims appropriation and contract payments. Anything anybody wants pulled off?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave, to approve consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Communication, question petitions, lakes and river improvement project update. Good evening, Mr. Paulson.
Evening, council, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're going to provide an updated regulation of River Improvement Project. With us tonight is Todd Ullrich from Bolton Mink. He's been our close working partner on this project here for a number of years. Put together the presentation and provide an overview of what we've done, what's going on currently, and kind of what's expected in the near, short, future as well. So without further ado, we'll get this heated up, and we'll get Todd up here and give you a presentation. Please feel free to ask questions. If you have any thoughts or inquiries, certainly you can save it for me as well. But if something piques your interest throughout, please feel free to jump in. We'd be happy to discuss those things with you throughout. Thank you.
Say, John, is that my color? Is it green?
No, it is.
You never sounded better, John. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City staff. It's great to be back here today to talk about Otter and Campbell Lakes restoration. We have been making considerable progress on this project over the last several months. I just want to give you an update on where we're at. We've done some bathometric survey of some gravel pits, and I'll get into some of the details on that. We did do some, some drone flights as well, using LiDAR technology to do some of our survey work on the parcels that we're looking at doing the four bay design on. Geotechnical has been out, and we've done borians not only in the gravel pit areas that were pulsing the four bay, but also in sediment delta in Otter and Campbell Lakes, trying to find out what material is there for some of our future efforts as well. We've done some stream profiles and cross sections on the stream, trying to make sure that the hydraulics work for our friends at the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers, and then some wetland survey and sampling, getting into some of the permitting aspects that we're anticipating to submit on permits later this month. And then also some appraisal information for easements for the sediment four bay. We've been continually working with our agency folks, our partners in the DNR, the Corps of Engineers, PCA, and the McLeod County SWCD. We're trying to make sure we have over the shoulder reviews as we're walking through the design elements so that they don't have surprises during permit, and the city doesn't have any surprise comments as we walk through that process. Our sediment four bay, we started early conversations in two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three. We've been working with the appraisal firm Page and Mezner, Patch and Mezner, and working to conduct those this spring. We have some likely easements now drafted up, so we'll be reaching back out again to discuss those acquisitions and bring those back hopefully to the council here in the very near future for your consideration. We did meet with the landowners, went through a preliminary design. We're in process of finishing up revising that design based on their comments and their desires for the property. We're looking at easements so the property owners will maintain ownership and have access to that. There's some real strong interest in maintaining that ownership for their own private use. And we have the rights to put the four bay in and manage that four bay over a long period of time. Streambank restoration, we've met with all the property owners associated with the areas that we've identified for Streambank. We're working to put some language together on easements, and we're looking at no monetary contributions for those easements. The work would be, the city's contribution for that work would be lieu for the payment for the easements, as there's value with those improvements. But we do need to have those easements in order to fulfill the bond obligations of the money that came from the state of Minnesota. So here we have a couple of things. The sediment four bay down in the lower right corner there, we're currently revising that documentation based on the comments of the landowners. We're getting close to that. We're hoping to submit that for permitting by the end of July and finalize our appraisal documents and make some offers to the landowners yet this month, and then come back to you for a consideration on approval of those. We would like to, we're working on the Streambank restoration. We have been meeting with the Corps of Engineers. They've had some new, some updated rules to their permitting process, so we're working through that with them. And hopefully, we're going to have some favorable findings that the work we're doing is actually restoration, which is our goal here, is to restore the streambanks of the South Fork of the Crow River, not to do something that is going to be negatively impacting the river. So we're confirming that with their permitting processes. We have presented some of the findings to the landowners, and we continue that dialogue with them. I would want to give credit to the McLeod County Soil and Water Conservation District, or Dougla, yeah, McLeod County Conservation District. Those folks are doing a great job. They're really making the contact with the private landowners on those areas that are outside the city of Hutchinson. They have a relationship with those farmers and those property owners, and it's been a favorable relationship, and they're seeing the project in a favorable light. So we're proceeding down that road with them. As far as a project schedule, one of the things we've talked about is trying to get the sediment four bay bid before we would bid the stream restoration. It's two different types of work. It'd be two different types of contractors, and it also would let us know where we're at on the financing when we get the bid results from the sediment four bay, see how much money we have to go towards the sediment or the stream and shoreline restoration parts, portions of the project. So just to give you a quick overview, this is the watershed tributary Otter and Campbell Lakes on the South Fork of the Crow River. You see it starts all the way up in Wilmar and comes through the city of Hutchinson. This is one of the reasons the state of Minnesota has found this a favorable project to fund is that the watershed is a great, is a larger portion than just the city of Hutchinson. The city of Hutchinson has been recognized as doing your share on the urban parts tributary to Otter and Campbell Lakes. You have invested a considerable amount of money in stormwater management BMPs and reducing your pollutant contributions to the local river and stream. We have two projects here, stream restoration sites, and then we also have the existing quarry gravel mining operations that we're looking to utilize as a sediment four bay. I would say that when we first started this project, we were looking at constructing that sediment four bay in the outfall of South Fork of Crow River inside of Otter and Campbell Lakes and doing it in that location. That was not seen as a very favorable location for the DNR. And as we approached this project, and we found these gravel pits, and we found some willing landowners to work with us, that this has been seen as a win-win from a regulatory standpoint and also for the ability to maintain these locations in the future as well. So it'll be less permitting in the future when we do have to come back and do some maintenance. This is a little older version of our, our sediment four bay design. This is located on the Arnt and Reiner properties. And you can see on the left side there, the stream would be diverted at high flow periods through this sediment four bay location. And it would go through the four bay, the sediment would drop out in these locations and then come back to the South Fork of the Crow River, just west of the bridge crossing here, east of the Arnt property. So we're projecting that this will remove several thousand pounds of sediment every year that currently is deposited in Otter and Campbell Lake. And should we be successful in our funding endeavors to do the dredging work inside of Otter and Campbell Lake, this project will protect that investment well into the future. On some of the stream restoration practices, we're emphasizing trying to do as much natural material restoration as we can, adding habitat along these areas to encourage fish spawning as well as fish recruitment areas, and then areas for fish to hide out and also to collect sediment to grow those streambanks and help them be stable over a long period of time. So we're using some till wood areas here. You can see some of the details where we take the really, the root system of trees, and we kind of bury the trunk of the tree in the ground and let the root system be exposed inside the stream. That provides fish habitat, and then it also allows the current to move around those roots and deposit sediment in there and continue to grow that streambank over time. We're using some native vegetation, some willow stakes as well, some deep rooted materials that aren't easily eroded away during high flows. And then we're also in areas where we know that we have some pretty high velocities. I can think of the Johnson property, which has got this deep, the steep streambanks. We'll use some rock along the toes there to keep that toe in place so it doesn't erode under that bank and let that bank then fall down on top of the river. So there's a lot of different elements here to, to the design. This is actually one of the, the areas. We just have a few demonstrations here. The one on the left is the Johnson site, and you can see that we're using rocks along the toe. We're not going to cut back that streambank. One of the concerns of the property owner, quite honestly, the habitat along that river is to try to protect as many of those mature oak trees that exist on that streambank. So we're going to build that inside of the river and then do native vegetation above that rock line to meet in and to blend in with those upper wood areas of that streambank and try to preserve those in perpetuity. If we don't do anything, those trees will end up in the river as a few of them have probably come down this year as well. And then along this streambank, we're looking at using some live stakes and some of the till wood that we talked about further down on the Farenbow site, and trying to do that natural restoration in these locations where we don't have quite the velocities that we have in these really steep corners. And we also have some areas where we have some roadways that we're trying to protect as well, that we want to make sure that erosion doesn't continue to push up against those roadways. In this site, we're using a series of rock veins or bendaway weir's, as some folks may call it. You see these little rock structures that protrude into the stream. They redirect that stream channel back to the middle, preventing it from cutting the outside edge of this bank, protecting the roadway here. And the same here along Vale Avenue. We're going to use some till rock, and then we'll also use some native vegetation in there to protect those streambanks. Future work, we're working through some of the final permits, middle requests. We will be submitting some sixty percent plans to our partners in the regulatory process to get some initial comments back before we formally submit that. We're hoping to finalize the easements here in the next couple of months, and then the final plans and specifications for a fall bid, and then winter constructions. The sediment four bay works very well for winter construction work. It would have been pretty difficult right now to try to get out there and do that work. I'm glad we're not under construction. And then the other aspect that we are working on is in tandem with your wastewater treatment plant folks at the city and the PCA to look at possibly garnering some credits on the nutrient trading program with PCA. So we'll have the PCA out there looking at these sites. We've done some testing on sediment to get some nutrient analysis so we can justify the, the trading credits that might be available for the city. And then also, this fall, we'll be back talking about future funding for the project and some of the initiatives we might want to undertake and consider for that funding for the next segments of the project. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
With the high flow, but you know, all the rain that we had, has it been eroding quite a bit out there on those sharp corners again?
Yep, and some of them certainly are worse than others. It's something that it just, it seems like it's a cancer, just continues to spread. Once we start to see undercutting on those toes, it'll just continue to creep downstream until it sloughs in, and then it starts creating a new bank, if you will. So we have seen some of that here this spring already. Fortunately, we haven't had the water like rapid end, but in any event, yeah, we continue to monitor it. And yeah, a lot of these areas we've identified already, then repairs are identified to help eliminate or certainly reduce the risks associated with those losses.
Say, Todd, you know, this is just outside city limits. Maybe you can touch on the benefit of why this area was picked first, especially when it's not in city limits.
Yeah, I think the benefits of, of the sediment four bay area are twofold. One, I discussed a little bit about the regulatory process. We went through an environmental assessment worksheet for this project, and there were serious concerns about actually putting a stormwater BMP or a sediment basin inside of Otter and Campbell Lakes. It's a, it's a water of the state. The DNR has pretty rigorous requirements for how we can remove that material. And anytime we would do maintenance, we'd have to go through that same process to go in and do the maintenance. In the location that's been selected, it is, it's private land. It's existing quarry areas or quarry areas that are proposed for restoration that we can go in and do this work, and we'll add some habitat in there along with the sediment four bay. It allows us unfettered access to go in in the future and do maintenance when we need to on the timing that the city can do it. And there's less regulatory issues associated with that. We have also future storage built into the easement parcel so that we go in and do maintenance, we can put that material on top of the material that we're going to dispose of now. So it gives you access and then future storage for that sediment material as well, saving considerable costs in the future on the maintenance.
I think it's important, too, for the council and the community to remember, you know, and kudos to Todd and his team. You guys have been involved with this since, what?
Eighteen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. But you know, at that time, we identified roughly, what, twenty-three million dollars worth of work. You know, this is three million that we've got. And so adjusted to inflation, we're probably looking closer to thirty, thirty-five million. This is going to be a process. I think it's important for us to remember, this
is really step one of, well, it's actually probably what, step two or three of however many it's going to be. You know, we'll eventually, hopefully, as long as we keep getting funding, we'll eventually start to see more of those things in town being done. We're really addressing the source that's causing the problem first. And so I think sometimes you can lose sight of the fact that, well, yeah, the city got this money, but the work's taking place outside city limits, but it's really impacting the city in the long run.
Yeah, I think to use an analogy for Olympic year, we're not in a sprint, we're in a marathon here, and it's, it's going to take a while to secure all that funding and to see these things come to fruition.
Well, I think, yeah, you got to, like Matt said, we got to fix the problem outside the city before. Because I think back, John, wasn't they, everybody, I mean, when we were first in the meetings, everybody goes, well, just dredge it out, just dredge it out. But that don't fix the problem. That they'll just fill back in. And I think they said, what, in, you could dredge it out in, in how many years?
Ten years.
Back to the same. So we've got to fix the problem outside to make it last inside, so.
Yeah, and that was based off not just feedback from stakeholders, but also too from state agency folks as well, is that we're throwing good money at something bad if we're doing that. If we're just going to dredge it, we're just going to spend an eternal, our lifetime dredging that basin just to try to keep it, have some depth so it can be recreated on and fished regularly. But yeah, and then back to Matt's point, too, is the benefit, not just to the people, the community, and the city of Hutchinson, but also to the region as well. And that's where bonding funds and those types of things from state agencies come from, is really that nexus connecting the dot, that it's not just an amenity for the community, it's an amenity for the entire region that others can utilize it, public water access, recreation, those types of things are certainly important to not just the people in town, but also the people outside of town as well.
John, you were discussing credits with wastewater and that. And forgive me for asking the question, but we're talking sediments as opposed to nitrates, phosphates?
Great question. Kind of glanced over that. We could get into the weeds. I'm not going to get into the weeds. I'll give you a quick synopsis of it. The city of Hutchinson's currently under a compliance calendar with our wastewater treatment facility permit. That permit has a strict discharge requirement for phosphorus in this case. So relative to trading and potential credits associated with trading, it's specifically targeting phosphorus. So that's part of the sediment analysis that's been collected and done, is to basically show proof to the PCA that that sediment that we're minimizing and reducing from getting into the lake and washing downstream through the system, what type of phosphorus concentration does it have? How much removal can we see? And then there's credit analysis based around that. It's not a one for one. So for every pound of phosphorus removed, we don't get a pound of credit at the wastewater plant. It's like a three to one. They want margin of safety.
But you still have the, for the public consumption of it, is the water's cleaner. You have less nitrates, you have less algae growth, and you know, that's what people want in the lakes now is, if you look at them, you know, the lakes right now, because all the run, everything we've had, and the algae bloom is huge this year. This would take away some of that. Now, another question, this is kind of off the subject, but maybe on the subject, because, you know, we have a lot of farms along that area. Is there a nine ninety plan or any plans that those farmers are working with, with manure calibration or anything along those lines?
SWCD is actively involved with a lot of those landowners already with the different programs they have related to cover crops, CRP, manure management plans, all those types of things. SWCD works closely with those landowners.
So they're pretty active with that, then?
Correct. One of the, one of the things that has a great opportunity for trading credits for the PCA is if you can remove cattle from directly grazing within the waterway. I haven't found any. There's, I haven't seen any spots that are fenced right up to the river or actually into the river where there's actually cattle grazing. But that's another example, one of those things that can be done to help reduce that contribution of pollutants to the river.
And for farmers, I'm not accusing, it's not an accusation here. It's, there's good plans in place, and some watersheds have wonderful activity, and farmers are the stewards of that land, so they want it to be able to pass it along to the grandchildren. I'm just making sure we have the resources out there that they can comply with that and make it better.
One, I'll let you jump in here, Matt. I know you had.
No, I was going to say, you mentioned SWCD, and you know, they've been a great partner with us, along with the DNR. It's, when you go to these meetings, it's not just city of Hutchinson and Todd sitting there talking. We've got partners from, what, four, five, six different agencies. And so this is, in my mind, this is one of those perfect examples of collaboration among government agencies and producing a good, hopefully good product and a great product. But it's nice having all those people at the table. And as John mentioned, SWCD, they're doing all these other programs that are directly benefiting this project in a different manner than the funding that we're getting.
I think one of the things I didn't mention is we do have some on farm practices that we had mentioned in our grant application, and they're being administered and actually going to be constructed by the SWCD. And they have found some additional funding to come into that program. So at this point, we're not anticipating expenditures in those locations. We've gone through and identified, I think there's fifteen upland sites, and I think they've been able to successfully contact and, and get some buy-in from about ten of those property owners. So they'll be doing some on the field improvements to reduce sediment loads coming off of those fields in, in the near future. And they have funding through a different funding source than this funding for that. But we used this money to identify those sites initially.
Yeah, that's a, get back to your point, Tim, too, is that SWCD continues to work on that. They've been working on these things for a long time. They'll continue to do so. One of the reasons why we probably don't see cattle grazing in the river is probably because of some of the efforts and education and outreach that have been done by the SWCD in years past. But certainly, kind of the next point is, I think, it's important to note that SWCD is an important partner, DNR is an important partner, for a lot of different reasons. PCA, Army Corps of Engineers, Bowman Mink, we all have a role to play. It's either implementation, it's permitting, it's something. The more, we're all knowledgeable about what the others are working on. Keeping them engaged is such an important, critical part of that process. PCA, they've been at the table, we've had conversations with them. When we get into the trading, that gets to be much more robust as far as how much interaction we'll have with PCA staff. But that goes a long way to potentially addressing some issues at our wastewater treatment facility as well. It might have the potential of offsetting a huge capital improvement down the road if we're able to achieve trading adequate enough so we don't have to make a large capital investment.
Well, and quite frankly, with the river, with the river and the water, we have a opportunity for recreational use of it, too, and we're not seeing as much as we could potentially tap into using that.
Yeah.
So.
Certainly being underutilized. It does get used, but certainly could be better. That's one of the, certainly one of the primary goals of the project as a whole.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for the report.
Thanks, Todd.
We have no unfinished business, underdue business, the twenty-two thousand twenty-three comprehensive financial report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Earlier tonight, at the workshop, we went through in a little bit more detail of the year-end two thousand twenty-three annual financial audit that we underwent. And Abby Schmidt from Abdoar Independent Auditor that the city uses is here again to kind of give a more condensed summary version of it. So again, if you have any questions as you go through, don't hesitate to ask along the way. And just for the public's knowledge, that there will be a summary publication in the McLeod County Chronicle in this Friday's edition, and then the full annual report will be published to the city's website in the coming days as well. And also, at the end of this, we do need approval, if you are so willing. Thank you very much. Abby, go ahead.
Thanks, Justin. So I'll just be going through a quick snapshot of your two thousand twenty-three audit results. We issued an unmodified or clean opinion, just meaning we are confident that users of the financial statements are getting accurate information. No legal compliance issues related to Minnesota state statutes. And then the city did require a single audit related to federal funds. One minor finding related to that, which was just having some written specific policies in place regarding a federal, use of federal funds. But the city's already worked on that in two thousand twenty-four to get that in place. A quick look at the general fund. The city policy is to maintain forty percent of next year's budgeted expenditures, an additional ten percent for levy stabilization. The city has maintained above that around fifty-five percent the last five years. So no, no issues with maintaining that policy. So no, no issues with maintaining that policy. A budget to actual look at the general fund. Um, the, the main reason for your increase in fund balance of around 400,000 was due to, um, a good year for interest earnings, um, the rate of return, uh, increased from last year and usually budget conservatively, not knowing what those markets will do. Um, so that's where your fund balance came in, um, above where it was budgeted at a break even year. No major changes in your types of revenues, just again, with those interest earnings increasing that other category, you did see a little bit of a spike in for 23. On the expenditure side, um, really the only thing to point out is the other category includes transfers out and there was a large, um, civic arena roof project in 22. So the general fund did transfer out some money for that. Um, not much to note on special revenue funds, um, pretty standard year, um, for those types of funds. So if you want to go to, yep, capital projects, um, the one thing I'll note here is the police facility fund is in a deficit, kind of depending what comes in on the sale of the old police facilities. So something to keep an eye on going forward where that ends up and if a transfer is going to be needed to cover that. Your debt service, um, if you want to go one more, um, is pretty, pretty level on the city tiers projects. So these are obligations for the next 10 years. So this graph looks similar year over year, just as, um, new jet, old debt drops off, new debt is added, um, which is what you want to be able to keep that debt service levy, um, stable. I'll just touch briefly on each of your enterprise funds. Um, your water fund is doing just fine, building up cash reserves, um, to be able to fund that water meter replacement project internally rather than going out for bonds for that project. Very similar for the sewer fund, your rates are covering your operating costs and your debt payments. Um, and you did have a positive year of cash flows in 2023. The utilities commission status quo year, a little bit of a drop in revenues, but also a related drop in expenditures. So no concerns, um, with how the utilities commission is operating. And this is just a summary of some of your smaller enterprise funds. Um, the one thing I want to note, the min, the municipal liquor store, we do compare to statewide averages in the city of Hutchinson's liquor store is right in line, um, with the state, um, figures. So no concerns there either. Um, so all in all, um, kind of a, a normal year for the city. Those enterprise funds are operating as we want them to with those, um, charges for services covering those costs, building some cash reserves to fund thing and fund things internally when you can. Um, and then keeping that tax levy pretty, um, pretty level. Um, low budget increases has allowed you to maintain that general fund balance in the city's policy as well. So overall, very fiscally responsible, um, no major issues that we noted for the 23 audit.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the financial report second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the financial report as presented. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, what went on, uh, first reading of ordinance number 24 dash eight four seven, ordinance authorizing sale of municipal owned land to D Rock Capital Group.
Um, Mayor and Council, this is, uh, we received an offer in regards to our EOC building. An offer, I think that, uh, we felt was comfortable as a city, just based off of how long we've had that, that building in city and out there vacant. Um, as a requirement through city code or through our city charters at any, any sale of city owned land needs to be done by an ordinance, which requires two readings. And so this would be the first reading of an ordinance to consider that, uh, that sale of, uh, property.
Motion to approve ordinance two, four, dash eight, four, seven. I would second that.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve that ordinance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion carries. Great, um, consideration for appointing Cassandra Cosack to the planning commission.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we did, uh, there is a vacancy in the planning commission. Um, we did have an applicant come forth that I believe, uh, was passed on to the mayor for consideration, of which the appointment is in front of you tonight for your consideration.
Make a motion to approve the appointment? Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve that appointment. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay, motion carries. Temporary liquor license to the Minnesota Potry Festival.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this came in just a, a little bit late, but we wanted to get it on the agenda for your consideration. This obviously isn't the, the first time and so staff is recommending approval of the temporary liquor license.
Make a motion to approve it? Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve that temporary liquor license. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Post nay, motion carries. Governance, uh, minutes, reports from committees, boards or commissions. We have the Public Arts Commission minutes from April 10th, 2024 and May 8th, 2024. Uh, the Hutchinson Utility Commission minutes from April 24th, 2024 and May 29th, 2024. And the library board minutes from May 29th, 2024. Chief Jefferson, you have anything for us tonight?
Good day.
All right, Andy, you have anything else?
Nothing further.
Mike, do you have anything for us?
Like to mention the water meter project real quick. Um, some of you probably have gotten letters yourselves. Um, but, uh, Abby had alluded to the project, um, that kicks off next week. Um, we've had a few resident questions and just in case those come your way or via real life in Hutchinson or area like that. Um, again, rates are not expected to go up. Um, we're replacing them because of their age. They're generally, you know, 20 years plus, um, should be replacing them at that point. Um, and the project will extend over the next few months, but with the kickoff next week, you know, residents hopefully are busily scheduling them. We've divided the project into three segments. So this first segment includes about 1,800 residences with about 2,400 to go after that, 4,200 in total. Out of the roughly 5,500 will be replaced. So just let you know, if residents are calling, uh, or asking for more information, Andrea, Josie, Kim, all have done great jobs along with other staff, Stephanie, um, and trying to address them. But, um, just let us know, just to kind of dispel any rumors or anything like that. It's a pretty quick process. They brought a good team in, um, Hydro Corps. Again, you'll remember we approved this project a few months ago. Um, we'll do a really good job, very reputable company. Um, but, um, it'll, it'll throw folks off a little bit, so.
Speaking for myself, I called right away and, and I called, I didn't go online. Um, and it was super simple, mine's being done next Wednesday.
Excellent, well, you'll be one of the first. I'm going Thursday morning. I went online and yeah, two minute process, very simple, so thank you. Yeah, good.
Mike, how about the construction, uh, Oakland?
Yeah, Oakland, um, just done with all the subgrade, um, work at this point. We have one little pocket, um, they're going to excavate. Um, but beyond that, that work is done, they'll start subcutting now and preparing the road surface. Um, paving, you probably had seen today, um, we patched a number of areas on Washington. First lift on Franklin, they might be doing the fire department as we speak. And then, uh, tomorrow, depending where they finish up tonight, hope to do Michael Court. And that'll be that first, um, uh, lift. And then the work course will follow in a couple of weeks. Next week, very possible they'll be milling off Washington to prepare that then for the resurfacing. Um, so again, about two to three weeks off from where they'd like to be. But, um, if the weather holds and tonight, for instance, you know, there were some rain forecasted here this evening that's held off, so should keep them moving and tomorrow morning, if we can avoid rain, should keep them going. That, um, should allow us to, um, have a really good week. And then, um, yeah, on track at that point for just that final lift of, of asphalt.
When will Franklin be open for traffic?
You know, really, again, like today, people are driving on it. You know, it's limited to those that have to pass through, but there and Washington, folks are using it, um, pretty regularly. Um, but, um, if folks can stay out of it, the better. But, um, we'd expect the next couple of weeks to finish it up completely. Um, along with Michael Court at that point in Washington and the fire department parking lot too, um, should all be finishing soon.
Anything else? Or just get the traffic pattern back to where it was.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully again, and I should mention Jefferson too, uh, we met today and, um, they're making good progress there considering, um, they still look to be either side of the fair. Um, that's kind of still their target, um, but, uh, they're doing, doing well on that too. But, uh, should see some notable progress next week, in particular as they start putting down, uh, concrete, so.
All right, thanks, Mike. Mark, you got anything for us tonight?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Tim, let's start with you.
Have nothing tonight.
Are you ready? Dave?
My sentiments exactly. Nothing tonight.
Pat?
Uh, River Song this weekend, supposed to be hot and they got good music and, uh, Friday and Saturday. Great thing to take advantage of.
Chad?
Uh, we had an EDA meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, there weren't any big fireworks, just a bunch of projects that are kind of bubbling. So hopefully something sticks, but other, other than that, I do not have anything extra.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah. Just two things, uh, first off, this Thursday, there is an open house on the downtown plan. Um, that's from five to seven PM at Art's Place. So I would encourage the council, it's kind of a come and go. Um, so come in, take a look, see where they're at with that current plan. Obviously encourage the, the public if they have a, hopefully they have a vested interest and will attend that. Um, and then, once again, that's, that's this Thursday from five to seven PM at Art's Place. And then just a quick reminder that our next strategic plan will be at 3:45 prior to our next council meeting. And that will be on public safety. Always, that's it for me.
I have nothing, let's go home.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay.